Yeah, public comments. Do you have any comments?
Uh, yes, this is Ken Cochran. I have a comment, Mr. Tinsley.
Go ahead.
Uh, first, a procedural matter. I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of Park County. We have a serious procedural and substantive issue that'll take about eight minutes to deliver. We can divide it up into two people, or I can handle the whole thing. Uh, we just like your advice on how to proceed.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, again, my name is Ken Cochran. I am a founding member of Friends of Park County. I live at sixty Majestic Ridge Trail, Livingston, Montana. I'm a voting resident of Montana. On behalf of Friends of Park County, we would like to express our concern that the rec- recent actions of the Park County Planning Board recommending that the commissioners undertake a review and update of the growth policy appears to be out of compliance with the Montana Code and the county's own policy regarding revisions to the growth policy. What is the law? Montana Code annotated seventy-six-one-six-oh-one provides, quote, "A growth policy must be reviewed once every five years and revised if necessary following the procedures in this chapter." Montana Code am- Code annotated seventy-six-one-six-oh-four ensures that it is still relevant and reflective to the current needs of the community. On the webpage of the Montana Association of Counties, under the heading "Growth Policies: The Most Misunderstood Land Use Planning Tool", Tara Depew, the former attorney for Montana Association of Counties writes, "A record should be made every five years that the planning board reviewed the growth policy. In smaller counties, a revision may not be necessary every five years, but a record should reflect why not. In other counties, a revision may just include updating demographics or a full-blown revision of the documents. A review and any revision should also include ample opportunity for public comment, and if revisions is made, a public hearing pursuant to seventy-six-one-six-oh-two Montana Code annotated should be held, and the process requires requirements of the growth policy for revision and amendments should be followed. Again, public comment should be considered for the record." Furthermore, on page twenty-one of the 2020 edition of the state's Growth Policy Resource Book, a question is posed and answered about the roles of the county commission and the planning board in the update process, and I quote, "Can a governing body make simple updates to the growth policy? Yes, as long as the planning board is involved in the process, holds a hearing, and makes recommendation, and the governing board approves the changes," close quote. Furthermore, the Park County's own growth policy revision revision process as described in the pro- uh, growth policy, uh, and was adopted, uh, says the planning board, then called the Planning and Development Board, should consider in reme- recommending whether to and to what extent the final adopted growth policy should be updated at the end of five years, states the following, quote, "At least every five years, the Planning and Development Board shall review the growth policy to determine if revisions are necessary." To determine if revisions are necessary and to what extent the Planning and Development Board should review the existing conditions, goals, objectives, policies, and implementation measures. For the required five-year review, the Planning and Development Board shall send a memo to the Board of County Commissions with their recommendation to either revise or not revise the document, and to the extent they believe revisions are necessary. The Board of Commissioners should consider the recommendation, and if they concur that resivate- uh, that revisions are necessary, direct the Planning and Development Board to commence. That is the law. Let's discuss the process the planning board used in developing its recommendation to the county commission on April twenty-first, 2022. The agendas of the January, February, March, and April 2022 planning board meetings included an action item entitled "Discussions and Recommendation Regarding a Possible Update of the Final Adopted 2017 Growth Policy," or very similar words. At these meetings, members raised questions about the pending review process and made suggestions on how to undertake it. However, the planning board did not, in fact, evaluate changes in conditions or otherwise review the existing conditions, goals, objectives, policies, and implementation measures. At the conclusion of the March 2022 meeting, at the request of the planning board, Lawson Mormon indicated that he would prepare a report regarding the status of the implementation of the growth policy actions for the April 2022 meeting. At no time during the deliberations at their January, February, and March meetings did staff or the board chair indicate that any of the board's deliberations were inappropriate or otherwise tried to limit discussions. However, at the April meeting, Planning Director Enman reported that he had overridden Mr. Mormon's plan to prepare the status report because the planning board had no authority to assess the status of the implementation of the growth policy. Director Enman also shared his view that planning board members has exceeded their authority by discussing possible changes to the growth plan. He reported that the sole responsibility of the planning board was to recommend whether the commissioner- commissioners should review and update the growth policy. Subsequent to Mr. Enman's statement that the responsibility of the planning board was limited to recommending whether the commission should review and update the growth policy, the board adopted a motion as follows, and I quote from the transcript. Oh, good. All right. Yep, I can hear. Uh, let's, let's go back then, uh, to our action item. The action item that was moved and seconded was, uh, to recommend that to the county commissioners that they, um, review, um, the growth policy and update it as they see fit. This was approved by a four-to-two vote of the planning board members. In failing to undertake the required review conditions, goals, objectives, policies, and implementation me- measures, prior to enacting this recommendation, the planning board failed to meet the standards of Montana law and Park County Board's policy regarding growth policy updates. We have three suggested next steps. We respectfully request that the commission refer the recommendation back to the planning board and postpone action on the recommendation or any subsequent recommendation until the conditions of the Montana Code and the county commission's growth policy revision requirements are made. We further request that your staff be directed to prepare a memorandum describing the legal steps in chronological order that must be taken to update the growth policy with citations to the controlling Montana Code annotated case law and Park County policy. This memo will be useful in guiding the planning board and the general public regarding the process and substance of the review and to streamline and expedite the growth policy update. However, even though the members of the planning board and the public are interested in determining whether an update of the county growth policy is needed, we at Friends of Park County believe that an even higher priority is carrying out the action steps that were approved five years ago in the 2017 growth policy. For that reason, we urge the commission to require the relevant county department and boards to provide written documentation to the commission and the planning board regarding the status of implementation of actions in the 2017 growth policy for which they are responsible. If the actions have not been fully implemented, implemented, it would be useful to the commission and the public to have written explanations of whether the action is still relevant to fulfill the objectives of the growth policy and what barriers exist, if any, to achieving the goals and objectives of the 2017 Park County growth policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Thank you for coming, Mr. Cochran.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on. Um, action items. Discuss decision on minimum allocation fund request for the town of Clyde Park. Welcome you all. Nice to see ya. Anything you have to report to us? I know we got an application, a signed application. I think you delivered to Chris, she gave it to us. The, um, the decision falls on the commission to look at this. We've, we have looked at this. At the time, the Clyde Park was very late in the game, uh, as far as getting the allocation funds. Almost all of the allocation fund is already dedicated to throughout Park County, other, uh, of course, towns, Cook City, Silvergate, Garner, Will Sol. Um, so I don't know what to say beyond that, but we should be willing to listen to anything you have to say.
Yeah, well, I just, I'm Bob Queen, Mayor Clyde Park. Uh, this was an opportunity to improve our water system that and supply the adequate fire protection that our high school and this apartment complex need. And also, we're getting increased in water usage. Supply that with the existing four-inch lines. What's not adequate, it is inadequate for fire protection on the four-inch lines with these two things. We're, and it's the only way we could ever afford to do a project like that. Where we already are carrying two deaths from the lines that were put in in two thousand eight and eight or whatever. So that's, this was about our only options to make the improvement of these. We need funding to do it. Thank you.
You bet. Um, you know, recent, last week, I believe, I talked to Chris, and there are some, I believe, and Chris probably isn't this, you can correct me, but there are grants you can apply for. And I'm sure yeah, after this meeting or whatever, we can sit down with Chris for a few minutes and talk about that, but there are grants you can apply for that Park County's been very successful in, and other cities have too. We can, I'll, I'll be that way.
Are those Matthew's funds or?
Kristen, are you on the line?
I am Clint. Um, yeah, um, in just reviewing their application, um, and because they're incorporated, um, Clyde Park, of course, got minimum allocation funds as well as ARPA funds. Um, and that only happened to two of our cities within Park County because there's only two that are incorporated. So we've been kind of allocating our funds to our unincorporated communities. Um, Clyde Park is eligible to apply for, and I didn't see them in the list, um, for the competitive ARPA funds at the state level. Um, Cook City wastewater was successful with that. Will Sol waste our water was successful with that. So that's one of the options. I'm not sure if they're opening up another round, but they had two opportunities so far. And then, of course, we have MSEP coming up, which is, of course, due May nineteenth, but that is the old TSEP program. Um, and I think Cook City has their water rates to the point where they could apply for that funding. And then, of course, they're probably familiar with RRGL and SRF. So those are some of the other options that they could, um, go after to complete this project. Um, and I'm happy to meet afterwards to talk to them about that. I'm down in my office, but I can answer questions now as well.
Thank you, Kristen. Um, anything else here, anybody?
Well, my name's Brian Ekinrad, and I'm on council in Clyde Park, and some examples of what has been done so far, I'm sure since you guys read the application, the, uh, system's been essentially like, well, essentially redone. Uh, we now can uh, monitor levels of the reservoir remotely. Uh, we can control the wells remotely. Um, and I guess I don't want to take up too much of your time since the funds are already allocated, but for example, we had an issue last week where we had a leak in one of our main lines, and we were able to address that issue within a day or, or two because of, because of the upgrades that we have done. Um, and some of the issues that we're concerned with, as Bob said, are the high school, which is on a four-inch line, which is Montana DEQ isn't even, I mean, that's not even to regulation at this point from the, the state, and, and then we have eleven apartment complexes on another four-inch line, which we've looked at kind of informally doing some flow tests from an eight inch to a four inch, and as you would expect, it's cut in half. We have a number of homes going in on that south end of, of town off Dendmore. Um, so, you know, I guess we're slightly, we're at fault, uh, for, you know, being late to the game here on getting some of these funds allocated, but if this was something that we could talk about to get in the next round, or, you know, if we had to put this, if we had to push this, I mean, we, if we can't afford it, it's not gonna happen, so if we have to push this back or be first in line for the next round, or, you know, I mean, with the movie filming and, and the Yellowstone Club coming in, and, and I mean, Clyde Park is just being in it's just a huge increase in, in, uh, not only traffic and, and populate, well, people through town, but also water usage, you know, and our, our reservoir is almost down, our inputs are almost down a third, um, from basically within the last ten years. And our water usage is up a third, and so what we're trying to do is, is, you know, and then obviously with what happened with the Bridger fires and, and what we saw with the American Fork, and we're trying to keep this water resource available when needed, not only in town, but for other uh, you know, surrounding rural resources as well. Um, and from the fire perspective, I mean, we were just not, that our two biggest concerns are the school and the apartments, which, you know, there's elderly that are in those apartments, and if we can't provide fire protection the way it is now, I, I just, I, I, what I'm wondering is, is can that get prioritized versus something else that was allocated funds to, uh, somewhere else? Um, it seems like, obviously, we're all concerned with fire protection going into this summer, and our water sources are all low all over the state. But I feel like we're just waiting for something to happen, and if we don't figure out how to make these two small projects, we're not trying to redo the whole town. We ju- we've just identified these two main areas of concern. Um, it's just such a, it's just such an important, uh, project, not only for Clyde Park, but kind of for the surrounding valley, I, I think, so. I just, I just want it on the radar. If, if we're too late to the game, we're too late to the game, but it seems like it's something that should be on the radar, if not this summer, next summer, when these funds are, you know, we'll do what we can with what we have, and Chris is working, Chris Hayes is working with us as an engineer to try to figure out what we can do and where we can find some more of these funds, but, um, yeah, I just, I, at least it's on the radar. I guess it's something that if anything came up from coming to this meeting and addressing the issue, even though we're a little late.
Sure. Uh, Brian, you guys do have warning letters from DEQ? Do you have letters from DEQ saying you need these upgrades?
Well, I mean, DEQ expects it six inches. I, I think just to get the flow rate that we need to the hydrant itself.
Right.
Um, so based on our flow rate measurements, as far as I know, um, in order to get that flow rate that's adequate to provide the protection, the four-inch line can't, can't provide it.
Thank you.
And Clint, um, just, um, for information, we only have, uh, you know, a certain amount of minimum allocation dollars that come our way, so of course, we have a balance of about ninety thousand left. We have contributed um, to Will Sol, Cook City Water, Cook City Wastewater, the Fairgrounds Water and Sewer Infrastructure Project. And, you know, those amounts range from two hundred to, well, one fifty to two hundred thousand to meet matching funds for their projects that they've already gotten, quite a few funds from other grants throughout the state. Um, and they are unincorporated, so, um, I know that Clyde Park received I think close to about two hundred and fifty thousand in ARPA and minimum allocation grant funds that they can use toward that project, so I don't know if they, he just mentioned, you know, the traffic up to Crazy Mountain Ranch. I don't know if they've talked to those landowners about helping contribute if they think that's a, you know, working against their infrastructure at this point, but just some other options out there, um, that our unincorporated communities just don't have.
Sure. Um, Kristen, after this meeting, can we come down to see you?
Yep, I'll be here.
That's great. Thank you. Commissioner comments?
Uh, it's really good to get the update. I've read the report, and your comments are really spot on. It's certainly on my radar as are the struggles in Cook City, Silvergate, Garner, Will Sol. And, um, I'm grateful you've got your own ARPA source. That's something these other communities don't have, so that's terrific. You had forethought there. Uh, but there's only so much money, and, uh, that's kind of where we are now.
Yeah, one more question. Did, did the lady Chris, did she state we got two hundred and fifty thousand? That's incorrect. We got seventy-six thousand in the pot. A is what we refer to. We didn't get any two hundred and fifty thousand allocated. If I, as I misunderstood.
Yeah, your application suggested seventy, seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-one.
Yeah, that's all what we.
Is that minimum, minimum allocation grant of ninety-three thousand, eight thirty? First total of one hundred seventy-three, six oh seven?
No.
Towards the project?
I think that's in the second round.
Hmm.
Is what's going on with that. We got the first round, which we have delegated out and used to upgrade the system and trying to protect our spring boxes, put in fencing at our spring boxes, because we just have a broke-down cattle fence there. I don't think we've received that second round.
Yeah, maybe we can talk to Kristen about that after the meeting, if you guys are willing to absolutely hang out. We create. Is there a motion to?
Mr. Sheriff, I move that we deny the minimum allocation funds request for the town of Clyde Park.
I second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Negative motion. It's kind of weird one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, what else turned around this meeting is done? Uh, discussion decision on task order number twenty-four Fairgrounds Water Sewer Project. Is there any public discussion about this?
Clint, this is for, um, daily engineering, um, they and their, um, architect crew. I think it's mostly daily engineering, but this is for a task order for the remainder of the design for the Fairgrounds Water and Sewer Infrastructure Project that will receive some ARPA funding and some minimum allocation funding and hopefully move into construction of that project this summer or this fall.
Thank you, Kristen. Any public discussion? Commission's discussion.
Mrs. Sheriff, I move that we approve task order twenty-four for Fairgrounds Water Sewer Project.
Second.
We've been looking at this for a while.
Several years, yeah. Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, discussion decision on becoming a member of the High Speed Rail Alliance. Fun.
It does. So I can provide a little background here. Um, we signed up probably a year and a half ago now for Big Scott Catches your rail authority, and, uh, I'm the Park County representative on that board. Last week, Lake County also signed up, so there are now eighteen counties across Montana who are working towards restoring the North Coast Iowa, which used to come through Livingston. And, uh, we're getting pretty good traction and, uh, building our network and our sphere of influence. And part of that, uh, leads to the benefits of signing up with this rail alliance. It will give us a larger voice. The membership is two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we can work through them to expand corridor development. To see to it that the long-distance study of the return of the high water takes place and to have some influence with 2023 appropriations.
Discussion decision is becoming a member of the High Speed Rail Alliance?
For two hundred and fifty dollars, correct.
Is there any public discussion about this? Commissioner comments?
Mrs. Sheriff, I move that we become a member of the High Speed Rail Alliance.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discussion decision on letter of support for USDA grant application for the Holmstead Food Network. I can't even say that word. Resilience initiative.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, thank you so much for, uh, considering this letter of support. Um, a little background on this grant. So Northern Rocky Mountain Economic Development District is partnering with a um, private, uh, company to apply to this USDA grant. It's called Partnerships in Climate Smart Commodities, and the two goals of the grant are to support, um, climate smart technology and agriculture, and then opening new markets to local producers. And so this initiative is looking at standing up, um, five-acre glass houses on, um, low yield or unproductive land, and, um, we're looking to partner with local landowners and local producers to operate these glass houses. It will allow, um, local producers to um, basically, uh, get year-round revenues and, um, grow new crops that, uh, would allow them to compete with those that were importing into Montana, and so um, crops that traditionally grow in warm climates. Um, and so this grant would basically pay for the glass houses to be stood up. It's a network that we're creating, and so there's two sites in North Dakota. Um, there, we're looking at landing a site in Billings and then a site in Park County and Gallatin County. Um, and I've been working with, uh, Mary Ann Keys at MSU Extension to look at different sites in Park County. Um, and we're submitting the grant this Friday. There is no match required, and, um, we're, we're, we're working on the finalized budget, but I think the grant will come in around sixty-five million dollars, um, and then, again, pay for standing up of the glass houses.
Sixty-five million dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Build building by rocks. Any public discussion about this?
So my name is Mary Ann Keys, and I'm with Community and Economic Development Program out of Montana State University Extension. We've been working with Jackie to help identify some producers on the I-90 corridor that would be interested in doing this and, and land leases, and so we visited with the school district. I'm pretty familiar with the ground up on, by the soccer fields, thinking that since they were denied zoning, that they wanted that, there's five acres there to consider. Um, there's no letters of intent yet, but they were, they were interested in having that discussion. they were, they were interested in having that discussion. Uh, the county also has ground up on top of Harvard's flats, which is hard to use for a lot of different reasons. So that could be a consideration if the grant were awarded. Um, but again, this ask isn't for any of that. It's just a letter of support and I would highly recommend it, um, to help localize our food system because the majority of our fruits and vegetables are imported just because we don't have the climate that will produce those. So the glass houses will help create that microclimate so that we can localize our food system.
How big are the glass houses?
Five acres.
Five acre glass house.
And very successful in the Netherlands. And so you see them all over, but they're piloting this program here on the I-90 corridor because of the infrastructure.
Will be a great test if you put them here, that's for sure.
And we did have a discussion about wind and climate and they said the Netherlands gets wind and rain as well. And so Jackie, do you want to speak to the climate concern?
Um, the, you mean the wind and the rain?
Yep.
The, yeah, so apparently if you have a very windy location, you can change the way that the glass house is structured by putting more braces in and then you use a different type of glass. So please don't ask me anything more technical than that.
The neat part about this project is that the private company they're partnering with is actually the partner that's going to help develop the market contracts and secure so that the growers can do the growing what they do best and that there's a, a network of contracts and providers, retail and consumer outlets for the, the produce to go to. Because we find most of our producers struggle on that marketing piece and securing the contracts and, and timing the commodity. So that's where the private partner is going to come in with the knowledge of how to do that.
The other thing that adds a lot of value to this is it becomes a network of, of glass houses. And so you can provide for a large system when you have one house that's dedicated to tomatoes and one house that's dedicated to cucumbers. And so then you can actually provide for a larger market. The, Mary Ann mentioned, the Netherlands has actually become the second largest exporter of food in the world because of the glass houses that they use. Um, and it's really low water consumption too, which is another thing that's, um, climate smart. And then the glass house has a biomass burner in it. And so you can burn all the, um, like plant clippings in this and then that heats the glass house.
Well, any additional comments? Commissioner comments?
I can't wait to see it. Mr. Chair, I move that we sign a letter of support from your state grant, application for the Homestead Food Network Resiliency Initiative at no cost to the county.
Second then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Jackie. Sixty-five million dollars. Discuss decision approved ground lease for Eight Mile Creek TV Ranch West.
Uh, so this is two ground leases for the airport. The, the ground leases are on the master plan. Uh, the airport board did review this and recommend you guys prove it at her last airport board meeting. Uh, it's at standard ground rate, ground lease rate of nine point one cents per square foot.
Any other discussion of the comments? Hearing none. Commissioner comments?
Commissioner Chair, I move that we approve the ground leases for Eight Mile Creek TV Ranch.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And I think the contracts are on that form. Okay, discussing decision on Casper survey task order for Health Department?
Well, we actually filed the task order and it was through Slidine. You guys got probably the same, but we just kind of preempted what we were. We knew we had it, but we couldn't find the actual contract and so we didn't know what we guys had. So, uh, we did get a grant fund state for seventy-five hundred dollars to pay for Casper's.
Great. So we can move on.
Yep.
Training this afternoon, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, discussion decision on improving facility fee waiver reduction, uh, for Brewfest for the Gardner Snoopy School President Pre-School Fundraiser. Any, Commissioner, any comments on this? Hearing none. Commissioner comments?
I'm familiar with the Gardner Brewfest and, um, also the Snoopy School and, uh, its daycare is really hard in Gardner Mallett, just like it is everywhere. And I think this is a pretty minimum way that we can help, um, raise a little bit of money for that Snoopy School.
I don't disagree. With a motion.
This is Jared. I move that we approve the facility fee waiver reduction number twenty-two zero seven one six tax one M. Brewfest for the Gardner Snoopy School Cooperative Pre-School Fundraiser.
Second. Any questions?
Come down to Gardner and join us.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Best decision recommendation regarding job offer to Chief Deputy Justice Clerk, Court Clerk, Temporary Justice Court Clerk, Chief Deputy Doc. Is this Lisa?
I will, yes, Valerie, I submitted this, um, request. Um, we, in the justice court, um, our previous chief justice was Tammy Tolan and she retired almost a year ago now and the judge would like to appoint temporarily, um, her current, um, senior judge deputy, deputy clerk to the position of chief deputy clerk, um, and, and make it a temporary position so that we can later post the position. Um, Valerie's currently been in the position where she does a lot of training and, and, um, assisting to new clerks so that she is in the position where she's currently acting as the chief justice, chief, um, clerk. So that's very, I'm sorry. So the request is to, um, to offer that temporary position so that they can continue to move forward. And currently they're working with two people in the department. Previously they had two and a half people in the department, so.
Yeah. Other comment? Commission?
Mr. Chair, I move that we offer the temporary position for the Chief Deputy Justice Court Clerk.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, North Park County Board of Recommendations, County Department Updates. Forgive me if I missed somebody. I don't usually have to do this. Kristen, do you have anything for us?
No, I'll wait for project updates. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Coleman?
Yes, uh, I'm here. Let's see. Last week we had, uh, the state, um, DES Western District Meeting. This is the first time we've met as a group after COVID. It was great to spend time with my colleagues and talk about emergency management. It's very helpful to reengage the preparedness mindset. Uh, also had, uh, last week, the Wildland Fire Cooperators Meeting with the Forest Service, DNRC, BLM, and Sweetgrass County. We discussed, uh, communications, resources available for fire season, our community wildfire protection plans, and evacuation planning. Uh, today I'm meeting with Tanya Cherry. She's with the Montana State Fund and she's part of our safety team, but I have yet to meet her. So I'm looking forward to making that connection. And I've been supporting the Health Department, uh, in the recovery effort. Um, we've been converting the iPads that we use for testing in vaccine clinics to survey tools and we're, uh, training on them today for the Casper Survey that should be, uh, beginning this week, I believe. Uh, and we have a fire council meeting this Thursday. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Important to note every time Mr. Coleman has a meeting about fire, we raise. So we should have him do that for two weeks or so. More. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Um, Shannon?
Um, yeah, we are starting the Casper today. Uh, we have Merrick Core volunteers helping with that and keep right from the state number to teach us, um, how to go through that process. Um, and I am gearing up to figure out the budget for the park.
It's gonna be so exciting.
So I have a feeling that's gonna take me a while.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Desnick?
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Um, yep, we met the Merrick Core team last night. Very nice group of young people who will be here for six weeks. We are sharing, uh, them with some of the other organizations in the community. And, uh, that's about it. Thankful for the rain.
Thank you. Uh, how about planning? Mike, are you around?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
If I have, uh, no update, I'll cover, uh, the important thing under project updates.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Morgan, how's the Fairgrounds?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, great. Um, yes, so we have a master planning meeting this afternoon at the Fairgrounds, uh, talking about steps forward and trying to plan for the future. Uh, we also have the Pioneer Banquet this Saturday here at the Fairgrounds. Uh, it is open to the public. I believe tickets are fifteen dollars if anybody would like to attend and, and hear more about, um, the heritage of our community. And then aside from that, just preparing for the summer season, uh, specifically trying to think through ways that we'll be able to reorganize and, and store a lot of our, um, facility rental items, especially once we move forward with the ADA bathroom renovation in the exhibit building, um, and just general preparations. So that's, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Uh, Mark, Museum?
Yeah, so let's see, intern interviews this week for the, uh, intern position at the museum for the summer. So that's exciting. Uh, a lot of good applications there. Uh, scary to say, we're about a month out, just over a month out from, uh, walking tours starting here in, uh, Livingston and Gardner. Uh, so we're looking for a few more volunteers to lead those tours. Came off, uh, Families Day, Family Days this past weekend. It was, uh, fairly successful seeing how beautiful it was outside. Still, that was nice. Uh, Living History Day, again, June fourth, so that'll be a big day for the museum, probably three hundred plus people. Uh, this coming week, we have a visiting researcher who will be cataloging firearms and doing the streets of them for us. Um, big thing this Saturday and Sunday, it's our strategic planning, uh, session for both the Friends Board, the County Board, staff, and looking for public input there. Um, that will be offsite at the North Park Field House and, um, also a public, we're hoping can attend the museum since it is all day and hour phenomenal. It's everyone's time for baggage in their hand. Yeah, yeah, that's where we are.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Matt?
All right. So the milling is complete. Uh, we turned the keys back into that machine. They finished that up yesterday, uh, with the milling into Coke Dale Road. Um, so now we can actually grade that instead of having the giant potholes. Uh, we ordered the bridge deck for Potter Creek Bridge. Uh, they'll be milling that and that should be, uh, ready to go here at the end of this month, uh, to get that replaced. The Bear Creek Bridge Deck, uh, that replacement will be next week, starting on Monday. Uh, they are mobilizing equipment up there right now. They're building an access road, um, so they can get their van lift down there where they need to install everything. Uh, and they should be set to go Monday. Uh, sending out a letter to the Hay Hook Ranch about opening the rest of Casamout Road. Uh, just want to have discussions with them because they do have a pivot that's on that road. Um, so I'd like to work with them instead of just having our bulldozer go through their pivot. Um, in the refuse department, I'll be sitting down with the automatic gate, uh, contractor this next week, um, looking at getting those installed timeframe and then some of the, uh, technology improvements we can hopefully do with RFID cards. Um, had a complaint on the county property at the corner of Gardner and Bennett Street. I looked into that. Um, we do own that. It's kind of interesting with the city road going through the property there just because it was the old platted subdivision. My plan is to have, um, Cushing Carroll come out and survey the corners of that property, um, so we can make sure that we don't have illegal use of county properties for business advertising, uh, dirt bike track and, uh, other advertising on that property. Just make sure we're following, following the law there. Then we might try to work with the city, actually get an easement, um, or split that property up so that the road is not on the county's property. That also should help that if we can use that property for something, whether it's affordable housing or donate it to the city for a city park or whatever, you guys can go forward with that. Uh, and then for the airport, we do have documents that need to be signed. Um, RDA would like us to get those signed sooner than later. So at the moment I have a meeting scheduled for us at eleven o'clock on Thursday. Um, there are a lot of just EPA paperwork documents to sign, so.
Sure.
That's everything I've got.
That's this Thursday?
This Thursday.
Okay. Um, I think I got everybody. Did I knock you on somebody? Erica? I knew I would do this. I'm still sorry.
So the budget worksheets and payroll sheets have gone into, yeah. I'd like to start, um, scheduling the budget meetings with the commissioners towards the end of May, beginning of June or Tuesday. And so my question for you, it's only Tuesday, Thursday, it's good days, is I could put out a potential schedule and you can let me know what works for you?
You think that's right with you?
Yeah, sounds good.
Sounds good to me. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Keys? No, yes.
We are this close to being able to post the three positions for the Extension Office. It's sitting in MSU HR, but I expect them out at the end of the week or first of next week. And then we'll start on that process. Hopefully we'll have three new agents on at the end of summer, which I'm excited about.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah. Um, Leadership Forty-Nine's graduation, big graduation proper bus party is June second at the depot at five-thirty. Invitations will be coming this week, but please mark that on your calendar. Um, and we're graduating the year nine or year eight class. We're also underway for the year nine planning team, which is exciting. Um, and then in terms of 4H, uh, we hosted the Montana 4H Archery Qualifier and we're going to send one young lady from Park County to Nebraska in a compound archery team. So that's exciting. We also, all of our 4Hers enrolled in the sheep market goat and market hog project, got their animals this weekend. So we tagged in twenty-four sheep, seventeen goats, and sixty-five pigs. So now they have from now until fair to learn responsibility and good decision-making and how to work with another personality. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't believe so. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to project updates. Um, public transportation?
Um, we have the Bus Barn Medal arriving mid-May, hopefully. Um, we do have continued increases in passengers for those grant funded dial arrives for their medical and dental and vision appointments and some around the town of Livingston. And we also are continuing to increase our fixed route passengers. Um, I think it's the weather related. And then we have a new grant funded program that will start in June from the hotels to downtown to alleviate the, um, parking issues downtown. And that's grant funded, um, through September.
Thank you. Shields Valley Communication Project.
Um, Ray from Tech Electric was working with ICE last week, um, to start the electrical, um, activities that will be needed to the building and the generator.
Thank you. Growth policy implementation?
So this is Mike with, uh, planning. The planning board did make a recommendation, uh, regarding the growth policy. I did, uh, receive the letter from Friends of Park County and I'll come prepared next week to have that on the agenda and to speak to, uh, some of the concerns that they raised in their letter.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Crevis Mountain Road?
I caught up with the Forest Service last week and, um, you know, I've I caught up with the Forest Service last week and no update.
No update, okay. Cyber security network upgrades?
I have an email in to Erica, I'm not, that's moving along, but I'm not sure when that's going to be finalized.
All right. Gardner Capital Improvement Plan?
That one is in draft form with our engineers.
Okay. Minimum allocation infrastructure projects?
We just received information from Clyde Park, and I'm in communications with Josh Wells up in Gardner, they have, you know, they have been wanting to get some minimum allocation dollars, and I think they're just trying to figure it out with their rates and their projects that are going on.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comments for the projects? Meeting minutes, we have no minutes, I don't believe?
I can pull them up from last week. Who are the motions, do you want me to go over them?
Yeah.
I just pulled up the meeting minutes from last week, do you want me to go over the motions?
You know, why don't we postpone this till next Tuesday?
Yeah, I've got it till next Tuesday, so that we can review them.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Okay. Commissioner comments?
As already stated, there you go, we obviously got a letter from Friends of Park County last night, I believe Commissioner Caldwell responded in an email, and Mr. Cochran pretty much read it word for word in his comments today. I was served papers for a lawsuit yesterday, and I'd suggested that we didn't look at the county attorney when she returns, does that seem like a good course of action?
Yeah, I think that she'll return next week, end of this week, so next week, yeah. Tuesday after Commissioner wore?
That works for me.
I'll reach out, see.
Okay.
Make sure that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds good.
Oh, certainly.
Sure.
I'm not either. Was contacted by a couple of folks about a sanitation issue on immigrant that had been pursued, and also contacted by a few folks about abandoned vehicles around and in Gardner. They pop up like flowers in the springtime.
Just they do.
That's it.
I have nothing, I want Commissioner comments.
We've got a meeting with the City of Livingston tomorrow to look over the city county compact, I've got a Southwest Montana June Old Defense Board meeting Thursday, and a rail authority meeting Friday, and that's it.
I have none.
Mrs. Chair, I move you adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.